Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 19, 2006, and we are in John F. Raro Council Chambers, Room 340, here in the heart of City Hall, and we welcome members of the public to our meetings each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And of course, we also have the first meeting of the month, on the first Friday of the month, excuse me, in Van Nuys City Hall, where we invite people to come down. We invite people to give public testimony here, at our meetings live, or in our Van Nuys City Hall, where we can watch you via remote, and vice versa. When we're in Van Nuys, people can come downtown to testify here, and the City Council can listen. We are being broadcast live on Channel 35, and rebroadcast via tape in the evening. You also can catch us through our city's homepage, online at www.lacity.org, where there is a wealth of information about the city services and elected officials, as well as our agendas, and you can watch live streaming videocast, webcast, of our council proceedings. Lastly, if you're not near a computer or a television, you can always call in to listen to the proceedings of the council, either our committees or the full council, and that is at council phone, which you can call it 213-621-CITY, and just punch in which meeting you want to listen to, and you can hear that. We have right now six members present. I want to thank Councilmembers Cardenas, Labange Parks, Rosendorf and Zine for being here pursuant to council rules, on time at the top of the hour, and we have Councilmember Smith excused to arrive at 11:30 today, but other than that, would like the other council members to come down and join us. As soon as we have four more, we will begin the meeting. Councilmember Gruel, if you will please make your way down. Councilmember Hahn, if you will please come down to council chambers. Councilmember Wezar. Councilmember Padilla. Councilmembers Perry and Reyes. Councilmember Weiss and Councilmember Wesson. As soon as there are 10 members, that constitutes two-thirds of our body, and an official quorum, and we'll begin the meeting then. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange, in the meantime. Mr. Labange.
Interviewing moments before we start council. Could I play a little Chuck Berry? Would you mind if we play a little Chuck Berry, "Little Promised Land," one of the greatest songs Chuck Berry ever wrote and played, so...
We are waiting two of you, and we will begin the meeting as soon as two of you arrive. Thank you. I want to make one last quorum call to our fellow colleagues, councilmember Hahn, Padilla, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, and Wesson. We are waiting two of you. It's after 10:10 now. If we don't have a quorum by a quarter after, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Wesson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Hahn, Wezar, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendorf, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Gruel moves, and Mr. Wesson seconds. If there's no objection, that is unanimously approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Wezar moves, and Mr. Laban seconds. If there's no objection to that, that too will be unanimously approved.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute that's agendized.
All right. If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our pledge of allegiance. If I can ask Mr. Weiss to lead us in the pledge.
If you could please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Next order of business?
Mr. President, would you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Yes, let's take a public comment up right now. We will take a public comment on items that are not on the agenda, but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction. I'd like to begin with Velinda Jo Wright, be our first speaker for general public comment. Set the clock at two minutes, please.
Hello. It's great to see you guys again. Good morning, councilmembers. It's a privilege and an honor to speak before you today. My comment, my comment is communal. I want to express aloud my angst about the violence that has plagued our cities, others as well as Sacramento, to experience a 45% increase in gun violence this year. Ours is striking an increase because of our lowest crime per capita since 1956. Every year in the summer, Jehovah's Witnesses gathering are held at the Long Beach Convention Center, the only near Nirvana day since I experienced firsthand the effects of violence for me was August 19th. I attended the assembly myself. Granted, I remember annoying folks at 9:30 sharp, ringing doorbells that talk about the good news of God's kingdom. I wonder where we, as a society, have degenerated when it's no bleep on the radar, when three senior citizens elight a car at 9:30 a.m. sharp, and 20 feet across a street at 42nd and Western Avenue, four young men step into the streets surrounding a car, and let loose some 20 rounds, killing a young mother in her car and one or two other young people, as three senior citizens lay on the ground with their bibles. I wonder if it isn't time for us to build more prisons and sentence some of these young offenders to service in Iraq, because there's a whole lot of room over there. I would also like to take this time to applaud the mayor for his efforts in trying to have the mayor of the city of Los Angeles be accountable to our children in some, some way, and also for his efforts last week in Washington, trying to secure...
Thank you. Thanks, Velinda. We appreciate your comments. Jose Martinez Herrera is our next speaker for general public comment. Mr. Herrera here, going once. Welcome.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Jose Martinez Herrera, and I'm really surprised how the city council and the board of supervisor is taking care of the issue of myself with the city. A particular, it's to apply to a particular state of facts, and this is the beginning of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to bring out something I saw in the paper today, and hopefully it can open up for discussion. I think it's something very important. The mayor is going to approve $29 million for the homeless to help provide shelter and social services, and Zuma Dog's been saying how this is such a huge problem in the city, and I think it's fantastic. Now, there's going to be people on both sides. Some people will say, gee, well, that's too much money to spend. Some people say, gee, that's not enough to spend. Some people will say this does too much. It doesn't do enough, and that's just going to prevent anything from getting done. So at least this could be, I, I, I just hope that this money's being spent efficiently, and all the money's going to where it should. Conceptually, thank you, mayor, for this very much, and it at least gets the ball rolling on a city problem, because we could restore the city and build all the convention centers and hotels. If we're plagued with this problem that hurts everybody, we're not going to be able to achieve the goal of keeping Los Angeles a world-class city. Now, speaking of wasting money, we also have city council fighting so hard of taxpayers' money to defend on the ballot their own term limit lengthening from two terms to three, and this will allow not only these members termed out to run again, but it will cost a lot of money for the city. We're going to have to, that, that will get them lifetime health pension benefits. Lifetime of health care will be put on the city if R is passed, and that's a lot of money. And so if you see the council members, get them some vitamins, give them some wheatgrass juice, because now we got to help keep them healthy, y'all. And I'd like to say there's somebody, a political activist from New Jersey, and I listen to his words every day before I come to City Hall. His name's Bruce Springsteen. He's been talking about this for 20 years, and it finally hit home. It goes, "You better listen to me, baby, talk about..."
Could I ask you to lower the volume of your voice, Mr. Dog? All right. I'd like to ask you to please lower the volume of your voice again. If not, all right. Abraham is our next speaker. Is there an Abraham? After that would be Matthew Dowd.
Shalom alaikum. Give thanks to my God. First, I'd like to express Chuck Berry hasn't been to Venice Beach lately, because if he had to, he would lose his guitar, because there's a noise ordinance there 50 foot. Like I've lost three of my drums, two of my guitars. There's no music on Venice Beach anymore because of this 4215 revised ordinance that our great Sidney MacAskey laid in your lap and decided to leave Venice with a mess. Mr. Rosendorf was backed by the Democratic Party, and I know the Democratic Party, I've been a Democrat all my life, is not trying to suppress my First Amendment rights, my religion. If not, I'm going to back up from the Democratic Party and tell everybody that I'm talking to, my people, the black people, the Muslims, all over the world, to stop supporting the Democratic Party, because they're oppressing, if they're backing this ordinance. Stop music, stopping the artists. Nine paintings been taken away from me for displaying items. Three drums, one guitar, and two arrests, and I'm not just the only one. Here I'm standing with Bill Rosendorf with his arms around me. His arms around me, I played for his inaugural address, the drums, the Venice Way, and the next day, I was arrested and my drums were taken away from me. I'm here also in a picture with the Venice, Venice, a mural that they have of me in Venice, and, and it's backed by hundreds of organizations. So why have you decide all of a sudden to prosecute music in Venice, to destroy the art in Venice?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony today. Matthew Dowd is our next speaker, and then Sylvia Lynn Hawkins will follow that.
Thank you very much. Obviously, the Venice thing hasn't gone away. Wow, there's another one just popped up. The merry-go-round is getting more interesting day by day. But look, I want to talk about last Friday. What a joke. You know, I watched that show on TV, two hours of presentations, you know, and, and everybody who got an award probably deserved that, and congratulations, but oh my God, that dragged out forever. And then, you know, probably the only decent thing anybody said here was, you know, Zuma Dog said vote no on Prop R, but we had to wait two hours to hear that. The president pro tem Wendy Gruel went for the special agenda, and she's like, oh yeah, there's one item on there. Well, I looked at the agenda the night before for like five seconds. I knew there were six items on that special agenda, so she never even looked at that. Eric Garcetti said Los Angeles was business-friendly, but we just seen your wipe 100 home businesses off Venice Beach, because I know the businesses you're supporting down there, all the millionaires on the east side. Oh my God, they've got so much money. YouTube, business, Los Angeles Times, today, you can check it out. YouTube makes a deal with Warner, because, and so I'm giving a hooty-hoo, a shout-out to Warner, because they're saying, oh, we don't, we don't want to go straight to litigation. You know, we'll, we'll come your way. But the poor, innocent jewelry, incense musicians, all ethnicities, you know, whose national independence days...
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, our next speaker.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. As your scripture woman concerning the word of God, of Jesus Christ, and the Holy Bible, we must stop at this time until a later date concerning word study and index finger. No more profiles until further notice. Continue at this time to father how to stop a toss to and fro marriage. This is the beginning of bombing in Los Angeles, California. As your president, and from my wife, Senator Arianna Hawkins, we are moving on to further study and knowledge of United States of America government, Sylvia and Arianna government in Memphis, Tennessee. We will not at this time return to Los Angeles, California, because of this council board overriding and overwalking wisdom and knowledge in how to continue to fight a war in a battle that is concerning, that is about to start in USA and overseas, dealing with local government, churches, that is versed in United States of America government. As your president, Sylvia Hawkins, and Senator Arianna, president over the 58 states, again, we ask you to continue to follow and know that United States of America is about to be bombed, and again, as we move on farther, please continue to follow the profile, but do not expect any more profiles until further notice. If you not see me again, no more profile.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our next speaker is out in Van Nuys. Susan Rocha? Roca, excuse me, Susan Rocha?
Hello?
You're on, you have two minutes.
Okay. I have spoken to many of you in the city, city council members. I want this to stop going on in my house all day. Change to noise law that exempts churches from noise. It's ridiculous. It goes on all day long, every day of the week. The noise law is Section 5, 115.02B. It is in conflict with the state noise law, and I shouldn't have to hear this all day. It's an amplified sound system that blasts out of four bullhorns, and it goes off all day. This is recorded from inside my house. Ed Reyes told me he's not going to do anything about it, so I'm asking the rest of the board members to please look at the noise law. Like I said, it's the bullhorns. I want to stop the bullhorns. They blast their organ music, bells, chimes, on top of the church, five times a day, every day of the week. I think I know I already said that, but I deserve peace and quiet from inside my house. If people from the church want to hear it, they can go inside the church. We don't, we don't need to hear it from all over the neighborhood, and I'm within 200 feet of the church, and it's too loud all the time. And if I want to sleep in, in the weekend, on the weekend, I can forget that, because it wakes me up. You know, I, I don't have any peace in my house anymore. I'm asking you to stop the noise, stop the bullhorns. I've spoken to some of you. Please change the law. Please look into it, because Ed Reyes is not going to help me. I need for the rest of you to look at the noise law and change it, because it's too much. It's too loud, and it's too noisy, and it's...
Thank you very much, ma'am. We appreciate your testimony. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker here, and then Candida Morris.
Good morning. I have a request for the city council. Is it possible to get a, included in the packets that are handed out for the agenda, a council boundary map to show what districts are represented by the, by the, by the council members, so that the public knows, they can associate a face with a place? And number two, last, not last Tuesday, I believe, the Disabled Access Appeals Commission appointed a member. Could you tell me what the Disabled Access Appeals Commission does? And finally, thank you for hearing me. I'm not sure, from what I understand, public comment is limited to 10 minutes, so I was going to, I'm not even going to address that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Candida Morris is next, and then Donna Doherty.
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers. You know, sometimes we have some great city workers, and I just want to acknowledge one. Maria Sheets, she's been absolutely wonderful for many, many years. If you want a project done, and you need tools, etc., she's the one to go to. Maria, we need five gallons of white paint for this weekend. Thank you. Mr. President, councilmembers, on Friday, I distributed information regards to the Manhattan Community Court and the way it affects crime in the city of New York. Again, we have a community court here in Van Nuys. We need your help. We need to get more funding for it. Zeb Yarslawski has allocated over $500,000 for the Santa Monica Court. Once again, prostitution is out of control in the Van Nuys area. The small town of Montrose just had an article about how prostitution has spread to their community. 50,000 misdemeanors are released every year. They should be doing community service. Can you imagine the impact on this city if we had all these individuals working in our streets, cleaning up with Maria Sheets and others, so we can do a great job? So again, thank you very much, and I hope we get support for our community court in Van Nuys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Donna Doherty is our next speaker. Ms. Doherty? Is Donna Doherty around? Once going, going to, Ms. Doherty is, is next. Mr. Laban's was speaking with her. Welcome back, Ms. Doherty, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, President Garcetti, and fellow council members. Where are you? I don't see you. I see some other good people, though. I'm here again to talk about Griffith Observatory and the lack of access at the front four doors. We need to do something, and we need to do it right away. We cannot get away with what we have, and this is not just a plain little thing of people sitting here telling you ADA, ADA, ADA. This is a civil rights case, a Title II civil rights case. We need that access at the front four doors. We need either ramps, or we need sloping walkways aside from the stairs. We're not asking to get rid of the stairs. We're asking to do something like UCLA at Powell Library. And Councilman Garcetti, at that time, in October 25th of last year, in the Arts and Parks Commission Member, it was Councilman Lavanz and Councilman La Garcetti, talking to Dr. Krupp and the group, and saying, Councilman Garcetti was the one who said it. This is a civil rights case. It is not strictly ADA. This is for everybody in the world who comes to see us, that we make proper access at that front four doors. The other single doors are not enough to get everybody out of that building safely. And we need to be thinking, caring for our firemen, our police, our rangers, who will be in charge. I was startled last week because of the ADA. They're looking in New York for emergency preparedness. I called Recreation and Parks Department. They had nothing on emergency preparedness for that building, in spite of four years of working on it, and all the years prior to that of planning, nothing. I was told to wait for two weeks to contact the individual in charge. This isn't right. We need to make a change. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Doherty. That closes our general public comment. If we can run through the agenda, please.
First items on the agenda, Mr. President, there's a request to continue two items, items 15 and 29 to December 19th, and that's from Councilmember Rosendahl.
Okay. Colleagues, any objection to continuing 15 and 29 until December 19th? If not, that'll be so ordered. Next items?
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearings, items 1 through 4. The recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to October 10th.
Okay. Colleagues, any objection to that? If not, we will continue those ordinance. We'll open the public hearing, continue them till the 10th of October. Let's open the roll. Oh, we don't need to, we'll just so ordered. Next items?
Next item, Mr. President, is item number five. It's also a public hearing item. It's a public convenience or necessity, and the recommendation is to receive and file that inasmuch as the applicant has withdrawn the application for the public convenience or necessity.
Okay. If nobody wishes to be heard on receiving and filing, let's open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item 5 will be received and filed. Next items, please.
Next items are items which public hearings have been held, items 6 through 12. Item 6 is a confirmation of a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold 6 on the desk.
That would leave 7 through 12 before council, and I believe on item number 7, there is a request to hold that on the desk-
We'll call it special for Mr. Smith. Item 7, Ms. Hahn?
There's no objection. I'd like to continue item 11 until tomorrow.
Okay. Colleagues, any objection to continuing item 11 until tomorrow? That would be for the 20th? If not, so ordered?
Yeah, and there are no votes out here, so I was, I mean, it's just receiving-
Any other specials?
I have still some questions.
Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
If there's no, those are approved. If no objection, we will send nine forthwith, please.
Now the commission is gone.
Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 13 through 70. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are commissioners, items 13 and 14.
Okay, let's hold 13 and 14 on the desk, please. Other specials, colleagues? Any other specials on this? Yes, Ms. Hahn?
66.
On item 66, for Ms. Hahn?
Hopefully, there'll be somebody from staff here to answer some questions.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, there are cards on various of the, of the, that group. There's, I have cards on 26, 33, 34, 48, 57, 61, and that's it. And then 66 was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay. 48, you had 57 as well, and 61. Those will be called special for cards from the public. Any other specials, colleagues? If there's no other specials, we have 70, I will call. And on the balance, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
That would take council back to the items called special, and the first one would be confirmation of Mr. Jose Feliciano to the Industrial Development Authority, and committee report has been submitted and distributed to the council.
All right, colleagues, if there's no objection, we'll, we'll run through the commissioners first, then we'll come to item number 70, because I know we have a number of people here for that, on the combined charitable giving campaign of the city. We will come to that after the three commissioners. So, I'd like to invite our first commissioner, Mr. Feliciano, to come forward. Please to the desk here, item number 6, and I'll recognize our Chair of our Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wesson, for a few words. Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, and members. I stand to, to support the appointment of Mr. Jose Feliciano. And I want to assure everyone seated around the horseshoe and in the chamber and watching on Channel 35, that at our committee hearing this morning, Mr. Jose Feliciano really lit our fire. That was good. I should get a mercy laugh or something. I mean, rarely do you have an individual to appoint to a committee who has a very famous name. The chair gave a good, clean joke and doesn't get a, I tell you, I quit. I resign my position. I resign my position as council, no, I don't. But on a serious note, I think that this young man is, is the total package. He really did light our fire. He's very intelligent, very articulate, and on his way to a very successful career. But at this young age, he does recognize that as one climbs up the ladder of success, that you have a responsibility to stop, turn around, and bring others up with you. That is one of the reasons why he has decided to be a public servant. I was very, as were the other members of, of the committee, impressed with him, and I ask every member to give a unanimous vote of support. And I guarantee you that at the end of the day, we will be proud of the work that this young man will do in an attempt to make the city a better place. Maybe, Mr. President, with your permission, we could ask Mr. Feliciano not to sing, but to give us his ideas as to how he will work with this commission and how he plans to move forward. So with that, I would make the request that we allow this young man to say a few words to us.
Please.
Thank you so much for the very kind introduction, Councilman Wesson. Not deserved, but thank you also for not asking me to sing. That was very much appreciated. Anyway, good morning, Mr. President, council members. I'm very honored to have been nominated to the commission by, by Mayor Antonio Villarreal. I think in terms of my ideas, I think it's a very important commission. I have learned a lot through this, from the staff about the work that the commission does. I think, you know, ultimately, the goal of the commission is to bring more jobs into the city. These are not any type of job, living, jobs that provide living wages to our citizens. I think there's a lot of important work that can be done in the city in general. I think there's a lot of important work that can be done in the empowerment zones, and also helping nonprofits access the capital markets. You know, my background is more on the private corporate finance side, but I think I can bring some of, some of those ideas, some of those processes, some of those ways of doing business into the public realm. And I am, again, honored to, to be able to help the city bring more jobs, good jobs. And I think there's a lot that this council and the, and the city can do to continue to enable that. So I look forward to working with each one of you and, and the staff in order to do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Feliciano. We have Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Cardenas who'd like to be heard next. Mr. Rosendahl first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the pleasure of meeting you this weekend. You are a Venice resident, and, and you're a constituent of mine, and I'm your, your servant. First, I want to thank the mayor once again. He has put brilliant, sharp, committed people in commissions and boards and department heads. He's done a major revamping and has based commissionships and departments on talent and commitments to making the world a better place. So I am just thrilled that the mayor appointed you. And I heard my colleague just quell all over you, and I just wanted to echo that. I liked the way you presented yourself to me at an event, which was for affordable housing. It was Steve Clair's group that has been working with homelessness, with Section 8, and affordable housing, and you were there supporting that. I'd like to get your sense about affordable housing and our housing crisis in the city.
Yeah. It's so connected, Mr. Councilmember. You know, I think, first of all, we need, we need jobs. We need jobs that can provide living wages. We all know the real estate situation in Los Angeles. You know, real estate has gone up dramatically. Clearly, places like Venice are changing, and we're losing, we're losing some of the old-time residents, because there's not affordable housing. So I think it's an integral part of certainly what, what this council should be looking at. You know, I support that as, as a Venice resident, I have been a Venice resident for almost four years. But I have seen it. I have seen it over time, how the affordable housing is disappearing. I think, for example, the work of that organization is extremely important. I'm also on the board of a nonprofit called the Neighborhood Youth Association, and what we try to do there is provide after, after-school help to students and, and programs to, again, keep children in schools. I think it all starts with education, and you have to have the jobs, and those jobs have to provide living wages for people to be able to afford housing. But most importantly, especially for people that are getting kind of, you know, stepping, taking that first step of, you know, buying their first home or trying to buy their first home, we have to have affordable housing. So I'm, I'm not an expert on the subject, but I definitely support the organization. I think especially in Venice, we need more of it.
And what's your vision of yourself on this commission? What do you hope to accomplish?
Well, first of all, I think I need to learn a lot. You know, like I said, my, my experience is in the private sector, so I think I need to learn a little bit about how to do business in the public sector and how I can help the commission. One of the things that I mentioned to the Housing Committee this morning is that we need to become more competitive. You know, the way I look at it, the way I approach it is that the city, even though this is in the public financing realm, you have to be competitive with other cities and with other opportunities available in the public, in the private sector. And one of the things, for example, that I have discussed with the staff extensively is the process. You know, right now, the minimum to get something done through the IDA is about eight weeks. Like I said this morning, if I had to, in my business of making investments, if I had to wait eight weeks to make a decision, I would never make an investment, because those opportunities are not going to wait for me eight weeks. And we're not, and we're competing with other cities, we're competing with other sources of private financing. I think, I see my job as trying to help the staff and the council and the city to streamline the process, so we can be more competitive, and we can, you know, not only compete with other cities, but compete with the private sector. There's no reason why a world-class city like Los Angeles shouldn't be able to do that.
Fantastic. I like that energy. And on a personal note, I met your lovely wife, who's a musician, and, and the dynamic duo of the two of you is a great asset to all of us.
I have a musical name, she has the musical talent.
There you go, there you go. We look forward to working with you, and thanks for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosendahl. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you, Jose. I've had the opportunity to find out about your unique experiences, having gone to Princeton, getting involved in investment banking and things of that nature. You bring some very rare experiences for someone who's an LA resident and someone who tries, wants to make this their home. So that qualifies you to be a commissioner in the city, having lived in the city. So I just wanted to thank you for making Los Angeles your home and caring so much about giving your valuable, precious time as a volunteer for this city. In addition to that, on a lighter note, if I do bother you for a picture, if Christina Aguilera, who works for me, really, were to come down here, I'll take a picture with Christina Aguilera and Jose Feliciano. You see, it's really only one of us council members who represents the majority of Hollywood, and Eric Garcetti kind of hogs all of the real famous people up. So if the rest of us have to settle for namesakes, then that's what we're going to do. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will only accept a picture invitation of Carlos Santana can join us as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I don't think there's any other council members who wish to be heard, so let's open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Next commissioners, please.
Items 13 and 14 are confirmations to the South LA APC and North Valley APC, and there is a communication from the member of Plum Committee recommending approval. And I believe there's a card, Mr. President, on item number 13.
All right. I will get the box back in just one second for item 13. We will take public comment first, and then we'll have the commissioners come forward. So just sit tight for one second. Zuma Dogg on item number 13, please. Going once. Mr. Dogg, item 13. Item 13.
Oh, very good. This is planning. You know, I've been talking about the planning division. They make rules to stick up for the tenants in a lot of these apartment-to-condo conversions. So the Planning Committee puts rules and regulations in effect to protect the tenants and constituents. However, the problem, all these rules here, we have these things, this is about planning and land use management, okay? And what happens, first of all, the ethics review is pending. You know, in these times, I don't like to vote on anything all the way through till we have the Ethics Commission review not pending anymore, and actually, one way or the other. And secondly, I would like to remind everybody that the, the things we're voting on here, it doesn't matter if there's no enforcement, if they're able to sidestep all these rules and regulations, not pay the people that they're supposed to, violate code and conducts, and the council members don't stick up for the rights, they turn to blind eye, and then when people complain, they don't do anything about it. So that's it. Let's have a nice discussion about planning. Zuma Dogg, yeah, yeah.
All right. If I can ask the commissioners on items number 13 and 14, Reginald Chapel and Melita Evans, please come forward here to the table. And as they're coming up, I know Mr. Reyes is not with us, but I'm sure he would express on behalf of the Planning, Land Use and Management Committee that both of you were unanimously approved, and want to thank you both for putting yourselves forward for service. And if there's anything you'd like to tell the council this time, I'll give you a little time just to mention your, your plans and interests in these planning commission positions. Please.
Thank you. My name is Melita Evans-Swardson, and it's really an honor to have been offered this opportunity. I am a community activist. I'm very much involved politically and in the community in the San Fernando Valley. And during the 13 years that I've resided there, I've had the opportunity to see a lot of growth, and that growth, of course, has put a strain within the community. And I consider it quite an honor to now have the opportunity to have a stronger voice in the use of land within my community, and I so look forward to this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Yes, I'm Reginald Chapel. I am honored to be here today and want to say thank you to the mayor and to the city council for the opportunity to actually serve the city. For the past 10 years, I've been working in economic development and on planning issues in South Los Angeles. And so the opportunity to actually participate with neighborhood councils and with the greater planning department on issues of growth around housing and economic development in the city of, of Los Angeles, I'm looking forward to, and I'm ready to serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Ms. Perry. Let's say some comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Mr. Chapel. It's good to see you as always, and you have boundless energy, and you are blessed to have that. It's, you'll bring a unique perspective to the planning issues. Look forward to working with you on this and continuing to work with you to make sure that Dunbar EDC continues to thrive. And thank you for your willingness to do this.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Now, we'd like to hear from Mr. Parks next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to rise and thank both of you for coming out and putting yourself up for these positions. Mr. Chapel, I'd really like to thank you, a member of the 8th District, and also a place, living in an area that is probably more diverse than most communities, La Mert Park. And we want you to actually take the major role in, quote, "saving" La Mert Park, but also helping develop it to where it can reach its full- full potential. And so as I spoke to you yesterday, certainly pleased to see that you're interested, your background matches, and just like to reemphasize, the one thing I mentioned yesterday is that we can't keep telling everybody no if we expect the community to keep evolving. So we have to find some middle ground and some balance as it relates to some of these planning issues. Certainly zoning is important to us, but again, when we deal with conditional use permits, a variety of things, we just cannot send a message to every developer, every business owner, the answer is no, or else we'll never be able to reconfigure our communities. To thank both of you and certainly looking forward to working with you in the 8th District.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Another council member's pressed their button, so we will open the roll on these nominations. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, commissioners, and welcome aboard as well. Thank you. If there's no objection, we'll send six, 13, and 14 forthwith. If we can now take up item number 70. And with that invite, President of our Board of Public Works to come forward, who is the Chair of the Combined Giving Campaign. I know she's brought a number of special guests from the city family forward as well, and want to give her the floor. Welcome, Ms. Ruiz.
Good morning, Council President and honorable council members. My name is Cynthia Reese, and I'm President of the Board of Public Works for the City of Los Angeles. I'm here joined by the mayor's office and nine nonprofits to kick off the Combined Charitable Campaign. This year, the theme is Caring, Giving, and Changing Lives. This campaign is an opportunity for city employees to give to nine nonprofits. And I'm joined by the nine representatives from the nine nonprofits this morning: the Asian Pacific Community Fund, the Brotherhood Crusade, Community Health Charities of California, Earthshare of California, Hispanic Scholarship Fund, Meals on Wheels, United Latino Fund, United Negro College Fund, and United Way of Greater Los Angeles. Starting today through October 31st, the city employees will have the opportunity to donate to any of these organizations through either a payroll deduction or a one-time gift. And as you can see, I have quite a few representatives. I'm joined by the coordinators from the different departments. We're asking all city departments to partner with us and join in this successful campaign. This year, we have a very ambitious goal. For this six-week period, we want to raise a total of $600,000 to go to these nonprofit organizations. The mayor has been very supportive of this. The departments are very supportive of this. And I should note that the Combined Charitable Campaign was first started by the city council through a council motion in 1992, and it gave the city employees a way to donate and to change lives of the residents of the City of Los Angeles. So we're, I'm very proud to be the lead department on the Combined Charitable Campaign. We're looking forward to a very successful campaign. And I want to state that most of the nonprofits, out of these nine nonprofits, most of them are umbrella organizations, and they fund a total of 400 programs. So I'm going to be a leader and start this. And this year, I have decided to start the campaign and donate $100 to the United Latino Fund. I've in the past given to Earthshare. I've given to the Hispanic Scholarship, and I'm asking all the general managers of the departments to give as well, as well as all city employees. So we're just excited to announce this great campaign, the Combined Charitable Campaign, that will be running from now until October 31st. And I, as I said, I'm joined by departments, by the nonprofits, and it's really, truly a partnership and a way for the city employees to give back, change lives, and make the City of Los Angeles a better place.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reese, for your leadership on this. And colleagues, we of course have, each council office is asked to have one lead person in each council office to help direct giving, and we'd love to know more information of where city employees can go to find a little bit more information. And then I'll recognize Mr. Rosendahl for some comments.
Absolutely. I'm excited to say that this year, we have a webpage for everyone to visit. It's givetola.org. givetola.org. And we encourage everybody to visit the website and give more information on how they can give to this very, very important campaign and change lives.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. I might say that Cynthia came up to me and asked me for 100 bucks this morning already.
Good talk.
So she's extremely aggressive in this, but this is the best part of community, is giving back. And to anybody who hasn't thought about this, the more you give, the more you get. And if you want to talk about putting your money to valuable use, do it to the combined fund. There's an incredible number of groups and organizations that benefit from it. And I want to thank you, Cynthia, for your leadership in pulling this together and for the city family for being strongly committed to it. It will be successful, and I'll contribute personally that 100 bucks that you wanted out of me, right now, after this is over. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. And we're all wondering what the answer was. We were spurred on by our own horseshoe captain, Mr. Rosendahl. Cough it up, as he said. So we will be joining you.
Oh, and he has a checkbook. That's good.
I have a personal check out of my own pocket.
Super. Thank you very much. And I'm sure they take cash, too. So we will encourage people to visit. What's that website again?
givetola.org.
givetola.org, and we will link that there from some of our own homepages at our city council sites, too. And want to thank all the participating groups for all the good that you do in Los Angeles, and congratulate you. So thank you very much, and let's break a record this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please. Oh, yeah, let's put that forward. I'm sorry, we forgot to take a vote. A yes vote means you're for the charitable campaign, and a no vote is that you're against it. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved unanimously. If, let's keep number seven on the desk for Mr. Smith if we can go to the next item after that.
That would be item number 26, and that was called Special Four Cards from the Public.
Okay. Have item 26 before us now, colleagues. I think we're going to, we'll hear public comment first. Monica Harmon is our first speaker. Monica Harmon. Is Monica Harmon here? Going once. Going, she is. Monica? I'm sorry. Come on down. Please. Go ahead. Welcome.
Good morning. You know, many of you know that we're not always on the same page, but I do support a lot of what you do. Councilwoman Perry, I'll be forever grateful for you helping the Baseta children. Councilman Cardenas, your DUI legislation and the illegal vendor sweeps that you have in the valley are a big issue with us, and you do a great job there. Councilman Rosendahl has done some great things in my district. Councilman Weezer offering the award for officers in Hollenbeck Division that have been shot at. But this process of Prop R was flawed from the beginning. It bypassed the Ethics Commission, didn't get neighborhood councils input, didn't get public input, and ignored the city attorney's legal argument on it. It's interesting to note on this agenda item, it says nowhere that this case is pertaining to Prop R. So, you know, I'd like to know, who does Rocky Delgadoio represent? I mean, I thought he represented us, the people, because we voted him in, but then now he's representing you guys or had to hire an outside law firm. I just think that the process was, in fact, very flawed. Some of us do support term limits, but we can't in good conscience support this. Thank you.
Zuma Dog is our next speaker.
Oh, my goodness. You've been hearing me talk about term limit lengthening for about two months now. Rocky Delgadoio was here saying that this would be open for court challenge. He was saying it's deceiving the voters. He's saying you're not supposed to have two separate items on one line of a ballot, because what we have here is to extend term limits from two terms to three, plus ethics reform in lobbying. And so what if you want to vote no for term limit extensions from putting two terms to three for council, but would like to have ethics reform in lobbying? Well, you can't do it because they're two separate things. So that's the problem. And what happened was a judge ruled against this and said that, yeah, this is unconstitutional. You can't do this. But city council has coffers and coffers of taxpayers' money to fight this, so they fought it in an appeals court. It's back on the ballot, but it might not, okay, it's back on the ballot. There's going to be a ruling October 10th. So even though it's on the ballot, the votes might not count. So we have to get the word out. Vote no on R. Prop R. Vote no on R. If you see it on the ballot, it extends city council's term.
Excuse me, Mr. Dog.
Okay, well, this, okay, you're, thank you very much. You're right. This is to request money for the case, Donner versus City of Los Angeles, okay? And that's the money and court challenge that Rocky warned them about, and they ignored. So guess where the money's coming from, y'all? Transfer $26,000 from workers' comp, okay? They're taking money from workers' comp and using it to defend their own court challenge. It was already ruled twice against in court. And all that's going to end up happening is if this wins, is that we're going to be having to pay for their health care benefits for the rest of their lives. So give them some wheatgrass juice. If you see them walking around the streets, we got to keep them healthy now. And I'd like to say, vote no on R. Don't let this fraud be perpetuated. And why are we raising cities' taxpayers' money on it?
We do have regulations on campaigning in City Hall, so I will warn you about that.
Am I campaigning? How did I catch that?
That's, you have to be, you cannot be advocating on the measure in City Hall, but you can do that outside of City Hall, of course. Thank you. Next is Abra, I'm sorry, Abraham. Sorry, Abraham is the next speaker, sir?
Salam again. The reason why I'm against this is because I'm a disabled veteran, and all this money that you're spending for veterans that's out in the streets, you should give some of this money to veterans. Also, there's also a state law here in California where every soldier, sailor, marine of the United States, and of the United States Marine who has served, honorable discharge, any condition for serving may hawk, peddle, vend any goods where merchandise owned by him, except for...
I'm sorry, sir. If I could pause you for a second. We're discussing right now outside council and the hiring of lawyers, so we need you to talk to specifically what has been agendized. That'll be the first warning with that.
That you should give this money to disabled vets that you just ran off the streets of Los Angeles. This is what I'm saying. And I'm also saying there's a law here in California where veterans have...
Again, that's off topic. We're discussing whether or not to hire outside counsel. Your second warning. I'm sorry. We're talking about outside counsel, so we need you to, just a... Sir, we don't disagree with what you're saying, but it is out of order, so I will ask you to step aside for our next speaker, Matt Dowd. Sir, will you please let our next speaker come forward? Mr. Dowd is our next speaker.
Reset the clock. Could you call the name, please? On the, it's not, it's not Mr. Dowd. It's actually Abracadabra. Let's find some more money from somewhere to pay for something that's unconstitutional. But that's already been covered. I want to comment about the city attorney, because, you know, this is all city attorney business. I was over it, no, this is, I was at the city, look.
Sir, I would ask you to keep it tightly prescribed to what is agendized, please.
All right, all right. This is a request for authorization and funding, and it's a communication from the city attorney. Now, I want to make a comment about the city attorney's annual report, the mission statement of the office of the city attorney, because you're making him contradict his own mission statement. His mission statement, number three, provide the highest quality legal advice and guidance possible to the City of Los Angeles. I was here, and he came in and gave you that. So that's number three, but oh, no, we're going to go against the highest quality legal advice possible. But now here's item number two, save taxpayer dollars by representing the City of Los Angeles. But here we see you going outside, paying $26,000 outside the city. So he's contradicting his own mission statement. Well done. You've also got 1,000 city attorneys, or 500 attorneys here, and 1,000 employees, okay? So I just want to point out, it's fascinating that, you know, why don't you get these guys getting the $500 million from Sacramento, from Homeland Security, money for emergency preparedness? Get your attorneys on that.
Our next speaker is Victoria Torres. Come forward, Ms. Torres. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, city council. I'd like to have city council give us our attention. We take our time to come here, and I believe that they should give our, their attention to us. After all, they work for us. I'm against city council term limits. Why force community members to put up with a councilman that they don't agree with? I'm against city council for not asking neighborhood councils for their input on term limits. You ordered city attorney to remember who he works for. He also works for the neighborhood councils. Thank you. We have a voice also. Let neighborhood councils do their job. They were elected to advise the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. That closes our public comment. We'll hold that on the desk. Next item, please.
Next item is item 33, and that was called Special Four Card from the Public.
Okay, item 33 is our next. Zuma Dog, come forward.
Okay, here we go again. This is special event waivers for a Good Magazine launch party. And so I'd like to remind everybody what these special event fee waivers are for. Based on Jack Weiss, thank you very much, in 2002, he addressed this issue in January, and we're still waiting for something to be done about it as he walks out the room. But what it says is that the special event waiver fees are supposed to be for open-to-the-public events in the best interest of the community, and they're not supposed to be opportunities to raise a lot of money that the council, that people themselves keep and use for paying off their special interest homies, okay? This is a, the point is, it's supposed to be for the smaller nonprofit organizations that can't launch a street festival themselves. And so, hey, the city's being really cool, and they're going to allow the community to have an event, and they're going to pick up the fees. That's what it's for. That's what Zuma Dog supports. I love that stuff. But when you have something like Good Magazine, that's a commercial entity. Why are we picking up the tab? Now, we should still have these things, but they should be picking up the tab. And I'd also like to say that recently there was a street festival in the City of Los Angeles that was canceled, okay? And I am very happy. They, somebody sent me an email, hey, Zuma Dog, why did they have to cancel this event? You know, ha, ha, you busted them on it, and now they don't want to get caught, and they're covering their tracks. I say that's a good thing. I say if we are here talking to city council about these problems that are being vetted through the community, through the activists, through blogs and TV, and then we bring it to the attention of the public, and then all of a sudden, there's some public pressure, and then they cancel one of these events for the reason we've been complaining about, then thank you. I hope it's true. It's only speculation, but I hope it's true. If we're able to shut down one of these events, my time the past six months has been worth it. So I'd just like to say, please, let's keep this money for the community, for the small mom and popster being driven out of the city anyway, because the corporations are running rampant, and now all the mom and pops are shut down. So let's put the money into the community and not into the politicians. Coffer, Zuma Dog, hooty-hoo!
Anybody else wishing to be heard from the council on this? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 34, called Special Four Card from the Public.
Matt Dowd from item 34.
Thank you very much. Item 34 on the merry-go-round of life. Rush Hashana on Skid Row. Now, I'm not an expert on either. Just, I just had pause for comment like Rocky did here that day. I learned that trick from him. You see something, and you have a little pause for comment. But I'm not all about putting things down. You know, Skid Row, man, this is a great thing, but you know what you need? You need things like amnesties. You need gun buybacks. People need money. You know, do things that are actually proactive instead of just talking, because that's obviously getting you nowhere, because I just drove through Skid Row on the way up here, and it ain't getting any better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council members wishing to be heard on 34? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 48, called Special Four Card from the Public.
Matt Dowd back for 48, please.
Yeah, just going to take a minute to comment on this one, 48. It's another one of these fee waivers. You know, I hope the EAA has got their calculator out, whoever's watching out there in... You know, I hope the EAA has got their calculator out, whoever's watching out there in, in engineers, architect land, start counting up some of these things, because, you know, they're telling you they're short in the, in the cash box to give you the equal pay. But here's one, the Latin Grammys. You know, um, when are we gonna see the white Grammys street festival? You know, how about the black Grammys street festival? Are we gonna have the, how about the Aussie Grammys? Let's have a street festival for them. That's 13,000, you know? So I'm just pointing out, all my friends in the EAA, they're probably not my friend, but I wanna be theirs for the point of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to be heard from the council on this? If not, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 57, call special four card from the public.
Zuma Dogg on item 57.
Yeah, I had one on the last one too, but that's okay. So this is interesting. Um, oh, damn, what number is that? 57, y'all? I thought, okay, this is for the Wendy Gruel's Children Health and Safety Fair. First of all, thank you, Wendy. Of course, I'm not gonna slam that event. All I'm saying is, how come we can't call it the city of Los Angeles and give the whole city credit, y'all? That's all I'm saying. So meanwhile, that's probably a damn good one. But let me explain the verbiage on these special event fee waivers. Since I wasn't called on the other one, I'll just kind of apply it to this. Special event, instruct the city departments to perform such services as detailed in the motion, including waiver of all fees cost absorbed by the city. So the point is, please, when we see these come across the agenda, make sure they're for good things like this. So here's a good one. I'm gonna call attention to it, and as long as the money's going in all the right places. But of course, conceptually, on its face, it looks good. More child health and safety fairs and things like this, and less Good Magazine, you know, Grammy Awards, network TV stations, LA Marathon, and all these corporately sponsored events. Just, just let them pay for it. They can easily afford these small fees. That's all I'm saying. And then we'll still roll out the red carpet, all right? Thank you.
Any council members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, let's open the roll on the item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 61, call special four card from the public.
All righty, number 61, Abraham on item number 61.
Shalom again. This, this one is very interesting to me, that you can be so hypocritical and say you support the black community. Well, I was born and raised in America, and I remember the white and black fountains. I remember the segregation, and I still remember it, because I'm on Venice Beach now, and all the Africans are gone from Venice Beach, all the Rastas are gone from Venice Beach. Just recently, a 91-year-old senior citizen, black woman, sitting on a bench from Katrina, victim, was ticketed. First ticket in her life was given to her for sitting on a park bench. These are the things that, that you don't see, that I see, because I'm black. You don't have to deal with it every day. I've been dealing with it ever since I come out of my mother's womb with all this racism. And then you try to take money out of black people's hand and throw it over there on the corner over there. I'm saying America is for all people. And I'm saying Venice Beach is the same way. It's just not one segregated place. It's a diversity that made Venice Beach rich. Matter of fact, the first families of California was Africans and Indians. You remember that.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else wishing to be heard from the council? If not, close the public hearing, and please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. We will hold seven on the desk. And now, in accord to California state law, we will go into closed session on...
I'm sorry, Mr. President, item number 26 is still on the desk.
I'm sorry.
It was called special by Councilmember Han.
My apologies. Before we go into closed session, we'll recognize Ms. Han. Item number 66 is before us. Ms. Han.
66, okay. Do we have somebody here?
While we're waiting, we'll open and close the public hearing on that.
Our colleagues, the reason I'm, I call this special is because this is a transferring of Prop K dollars in the amount of $300,000 to complete something that, this is for the Banning Museum in Wilmington, which was, is one of the incredible treasures of Wilmington. This was actually the home of Phineas Banning, who, of course, was responsible for really building our, our port of Los Angeles. And it's sort of a museum that contains transportation items, shipping items, railroad, industry memorabilia. It's really a beautiful mansion, and it has tourists that come there year-round, schoolchildren, and it's really one of the more beautiful things in Wilmington. But like everything else, it has been the victim of graffiti and, you know, vandalism, breaking windows. So the Friends of Banning's museum came to me, I wanna say, two years ago, and asked if we might build a fence. They wanted a fence around the entire park, but after meeting with the, the, the park advisory board and meeting with the community members, that wasn't the message that we wanted to send, that the park surrounding the museum was sort of closed off to the public. So we compromised and decided to come up with a fence that surrounds the actual house structure. Then we wanted to make sure that it fit in with the historical fabric of the design of the house. So we've come up with a design, and are you gonna, you wanna come up? I need to know a couple of things. One, it always makes me nervous when I read, the original scope was to not exceed 350,000, and then later on in the report, it said, it appears that 300,000 is sufficient for General Services to perform this work. And so, first of all, I wanna know why this has taken so long. We were told, the community was told, the Friends of Banning Museum was told, this work was going to start this past summer. What are we gonna do if this, these, this money is not enough to complete it? This is really an important project to protect this museum. It's a really important project for this community. It's one of the things that's been frustrating me on why it has taken so long when this money has actually been available.
Good morning, councilwoman.
What do you have to say for yourself?
Neil Drucker, Bureau of Engineering. Just to let you know, we had actually gone out to bid through Recreation and Parks on-call vendors first, and the original bid came in at over 500,000. We had met with that vendor out in the field, and they thought it would be about 300,000 at that time. When the actual bid came in, it was over 500,000. At that time, we thought we could start work early in the summer, but, you know, comparing that bid to what we felt a reasonable estimate for the cost of the fence, which was more in the $300,000 range, we didn't feel it prudent to move forward at that time. We've since gone to GSD and asked them to go to their on-call vendors, and they got also preliminary rough order magnitude estimate about two months ago. The actual real estimate, I just found out, is due tomorrow. We're hoping that it does come in around that $300,000 mark. I have the CAO with me, Jackie Wagner, and she can talk about the additional funding. But just to let you know, there are additional funds in the project. So if the estimate comes in high tomorrow, we would come back to the council, you know, in the very near future for, to ask for additional funds. We broke the project up into phases. GSD will be installing, in fact, GSD is doing all the labor, so they can start by installing the fence posts and securing those. They have to put on the crossbeams and things like that. They can do all that while the contractor is fabricating the actual fence materials. So...
When is that gonna begin?
As soon as council approves this motion, we can, and they receive the bid tomorrow. Within two weeks, we can start the fabrication.
Did you have something to say?
No, just if you have any questions. Jackie Wagner with the CAO.
Why, if we know this is, if, if we know this has been appropriated, we know this project has been approved, why can't we start, start the work?
I would have to defer to GSD. They were here earlier. I don't know if anyone is here from GSD.
I don't wanna, I don't really wanna wait two weeks. Every day we wait, you, you are subjecting this treasure of Los Angeles to potential vandalism. To me, the loss, you know, property loss, you know, could run into the thousands of dollars. So every day you're waiting on putting a fence up, I think you're actually, you know, risking losing money in other ways. You know, who can I get to get up here to tell me why we can't begin, particularly with our own Department of General Services, to begin work this afternoon?
GSD was here earlier. I guess they've left the chamber, so...
Although I believe that approval of the motion will at least allow them to start advanced purchase of materials and supplies, so...
Okay, well, you know, I'm sure we're gonna approve this today, but these are the kinds of things that I think really, I mean, we're glad you got a bid that obviously is, it came in at the best. There's no reason you couldn't have been doing that for the last two years. There's no reason you shouldn't have really started with GSD, you know, to get this bid. And these are the kind of things, particularly when we ask voters to vote for, for Prop K, and we talk about the projects in their own communities that will benefit them. It's really unfortunate, this is the kind of, you know, bureaucratic slowness that frustrates me and frustrates, you know, our voters in Los Angeles. So colleagues, I am sure you're gonna vote to approve this today. I, you know, you, we were told that that work was gonna start this summer. We were told that work was gonna start before we approved this. So, you know, I don't know what's changed that we have to actually have this formal vote today, but we're gonna do it.
I cannot answer that. That's really a GSD question.
Well, and that's unfortunate that GSD is not here while I'm asking these questions. You knew this item was on the agenda, so that's frustrating me. So colleagues, without objection, I hope you'll approve this, and I, I expect the work to start this afternoon. You know, why are these guys there if they have...
All right, Ms. Han, you finished, or do you wanna continue? Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Am I finished? I don't know. I can think of more stuff, but I'm finished.
All right, well, we'll call Mr. Parks, and if you wanna speak again, just, just press your button, we'll be happy to call you. Mr. Parks?
Yeah, really.
Oh, that was a mistake? Okay. No, no, Mr. Parks.
Yeah, really.
Loose with the fingers over there. Got trigger finger. All right. So it's back to you, Ms. Han, if you wanna say anything else, or... If not, you wanna vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. All right. Now, in accordance with California state law, we will be going to close the session, executive session, discuss legal matters, and make any decisions that need to be announced. We will do so as soon as we come out of closed session. You can please... Welcome back to open session. We will be taking a vote on item number 26, authorize funds for outside counsel. Please open the roll on this. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, on item number seven, that was being held on the desk for Councilmember Smith, and I believe there's a request to continue that matter for one day.
Okay, let's continue that if there's no objection, colleagues, for one day. All right. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
The excuse is on the desk. Councilmember Han requests to be excused Wednesday, September 20th, to leave at 12:15 for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, she is excused.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Tuesday, September 26th, to leave at 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
All right, I will move that, and Mr. Weiss will second if there's no objection. So ordered.
And Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Wednesday, November 1st, to leave at noon for personal business. That meets council policy.
That excuse is granted, too.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Announcements, colleagues. Any announcements to make? Just before, on announcements, I just wanted to give my personal thanks, I'll do it, I guess, from the chair here. Colleagues, as you know, I said goodbye to a, a great staff member who is here today, Molly Reisman, who's come back to receive our thanks, and I wanted to thank her for the extraordinary work she did in the area of housing, community economic development, being legislative deputy on environmental issues, somebody who was just an incredible part of our office. Come up here, Molly. And somebody who I know around this horseshoe was well-loved as well, who's gone to work on Skid Row to help us with our housing crisis there now as well. And I know that she's gonna do an extraordinary job, but I wanted to give her my public thanks here in the council, and I hope you will join me in giving her a round of applause for her service to the city of Los Angeles. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, can we please all rise for adjourning motions? Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, I'm sad to report, Los Angeles lost a truly great woman, Alvira Ellie David, born in Czechoslovakia. As a young girl, Ms. David survived the Holocaust and the Auschwitz death camp along with her sister, Hetty Reisman, also of Los Angeles. The two of them lost most of their family, including their younger sister, mother, and grandparents in the Holocaust. Nevertheless, coupled with an uncompromising spirit, Ms. David's survival of Auschwitz gave her an appreciation for life unparalleled, which manifests itself in a multitude of ways. From making the journey to this country, obtaining a chemistry degree, to learning 10 languages, to learning how to ice skate at the age of 40. Can't imagine having, doing that. And most revealing, to letting her three kids out of school on the Cubs baseball team's opening day while raising them in Chicago. Her incredible appreciation for life, however, became most starkly manifest when later life, she was stricken with a debilitating disease called multiple system atrophy, or Schuyt-Dreger syndrome, which is related to Parkinson's disease. During the last 15 years of her life, this disease made it difficult for Ms. David to talk and function on her own. And during the last few years, she was denied the ability to speak at all, and subsequently even eat. Despite these incredible challenges and physical pain, she endured. Not only did Ms. David miss, not give up on her life, she embraced it even more. She showered love on her family and friends, often communicated merely through her eyes, which love was reciprocated right back to her. One of her grandchildren said she didn't need to speak to us, for us, to feel her love. Ms. David served as an inspiration to her family and to everyone whose lives she touched, and as an example to all of us to affirm life every day, recognize how precious it is, and to wring every ounce out of it, as she did, without wasting a moment in complaint or self-pity, as we often are prone to do. Although I never had the good fortune of meeting Ellie David, my husband Dean knew her and was always amazed at her incredible will to live and with joy despite laboring such unrelenting disease. Ms. David's family and caregivers should be honored as well for their sensitivity to her needs and unwavering devotion to her. It's truly my honor and privilege to adjourn in memory of Ms. Ellie David today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Ms. Han.
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of Eva Cash, who was the grandmother to Cindy Fowler, who was one of my community advocates in San Pedro. She passed away recently at the age of 88. She was a longtime resident of Harbor City. Eva later moved to La Mida, and when she was in her late 40s, she studied and became a nurse's aide for the Veterans Administration Hospital, Long Beach. She worked in the spinal cord injury ward for 14 years. Her patients were returning Vietnam veterans who were paraplegics and quadriplegics. It was her decision to start a career late in life, as well as her commitment to working, which she did until she was 74, as well as her deep commitment to her family that served as an inspiration to my staff member Cindy. She was grandmother to 17 grandchildren, 18 great-grandchildren, and three great-great-grandchildren. She certainly will be missed.
Second for Mr. Rosendahl on that. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of colleague Jay Nicholson. He's a former Grant Meade State University Sports Information Director. He's credited with being the brains behind the very successful Bayou Classic. It's played annually in Louisiana. He died at the age of 85. He died at the age of 85. He's had a 30-year career, which started in 1948 at Grambling, played a key role in several of their signature events, most notably the playing on a neutral site between Grambling and Southern University in the Superdome in New Orleans. He started the public career of many Grambling greats, of Paul Take Younger, first black to sign a football contract in the 40s, to both William and Larry Wright, who were both first-round draft choices for NFL and NBA in the 70s. His flair for the public acclaim went across the nation. Grambling played football games in Yankee Stadium in the 60s, Hawaii and Japan in the 70s, and by the time Colley retired in 1978, Grambling had played football in 27 of the 50 states. He produced a television program featuring team highlights and comments from the legendary former coach Eddie Robinson, which aired over 90 stations across the nation. Stories about Grambling athletics regularly ran in hundreds of newspapers. He also made a number of marketing breakthroughs and accomplished a variety of things that he's been honored for, NCAA 2A and the College Sports Information Directors of America twice-named. His press guide is the best in the nation, part of a string of 13 national awards that he garnered. As a member of the Grambling Hall of Fame, he was inducted into the Southwestern Athletic Conference Hall and received the Trailblazer Award in 2003. Louisiana State Writers Association honored him with the Distinguished Service Award in sports journalism in 1990. Most recently, the Grambling State University will honor him by naming the press box in his honor. He survived by his wife, Ophelia, a daughter, and a son.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Sunday, September 17th, Patricia Kennedy Lawford passed on. She was 82 years old from complications from pneumonia. As we all know, she was the sister of President John F. Kennedy and Robert Kennedy, and husband of the Rat Pack member, Peter Lawford. She was the founder of the National Committee for Literary Arts. She helped refurbish the JFK Library and Museum and served as an officer of the Kennedy Foundation for Mentally Retarded. In 1964, she served as co-chair of Pierre Salinger's U.S. Senate bid here in California, a sixth child of Joseph and Rose Kennedy, and she was born on May 6, 1924. She survived by four children, 10 grandchildren, brother Ted and sisters Eunice Kennedy Shriver and Jean Kennedy Smith, and two, here in my district, Max Kennedy, that was his aunt, and Maria Shriver, obviously that was her aunt, and of course Bobby Shriver lives in Santa Monica, so three of them have lost a dear aunt. The second one is very personal.
Second for Ms. Hahn and Ms. Grule.
Thank you. Is Ted Williams. You know, Ted Williams, recently I gave him an award for his work with OPICA, which is Older Persons Information Counseling Service. Here's a senior citizen with his dynamic duo wife Rita, always giving back to community. You know, he died on Monday. We're going to have a memorial service Thursday at 10:00 a.m. at Mount Sinai Memorial Park and Mortuary, which I'm going to be going to. He was co-founder and chairman of the Board of the California Clean Money Campaign. He got together with a bunch of other guys, they put up some bucks, and they started this whole clean money campaign strategy, which, you know, ironically, this November, there is Prop 89 on the ballot in Sacramento for all of us, which he was the grandfather of creating all of that. He was, for 28 years, CEO of Bell Industries, made a lot of money, became the sixth-largest electronics company, but he took the money and started doing these incredible things for community. He was a board member of the Business Community for Sensible Priorities, which was founded by him and Ben Cohen of Ben &amp; Jerry's ice cream fame. For many years, he devoted his energy to reducing military spending. Unfortunately, they continue to outrageously spend in Washington, but he just kept going on and on and on. He's gotten two Humanitarian of the Year award. He will be remembered for his infectious smile and his hugs. He leaves his wife, as I mentioned, Rita, wonderful children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Rosendahl, I can add to that, and I know Ms. Grule wants to as well. Ted was a dear friend as well, and somebody who, I remember being at that very first meeting, but being active with him for years before on other issues, and my partner Amy was very close with him as well. And we were just recently at his house, I remember when he hosted us there in one of the last public events probably held at his house, but his legacy certainly in the area of the California Clean Money Campaign, his passion here locally for efforts that we have begun as well, was something that really helped propel us, and to have somebody who was such a kind of a successful businessperson, I think gave so much credibility to a lot of what he did, but was just a warm man with an infectious laugh and smile, and always there to embrace you, and he will be very sorely missed. And I know our thoughts are with Rita and the entire family, with Wayne and others as well. Ms. Grule?
Do you want to add to that? Oh, okay. We'll add Ms. Grule to that. Mr. Zion?
Oliver James Walker passed away September 13th. Oliver James Walker was the uncle of my office manager, Yvette Whitaker. He was a resident of Los Angeles, born December 14, 1921, was a World War II veteran. Oliver was an MTA employee and retired after 20 years of service. Yvette's mother, Ethel, met Oliver through friends, though he would be perfect for, thought he would be perfect for her sister, Berlinda. She introduced them, and they married a year later. Oliver, Berlinda were happily married for 56 years. He passed away from complication of diabetes. He would be greatly missed by all of his family and friends. He survived by his wife, Berlinda, daughters Judy and Gina and Michael, three grandchildren, Michael James Jr., Sinclair, and Elliot. May Oliver James Walker rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. We'll next be in session tomorrow, that is the 20th of September here in City Council Chambers. Have a great afternoon, and this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. City Council is adjourned.
...